Okay, the time is now 5:03 PM and the June 11th, 2024 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting will come to order. Good evening and welcome to the Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I am Jonathan Briggs, Chair and Member of the Board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions of our committee members, starting with Board Members, then Administration, then Board Office Staff and the Board Legal Counsel. So I will turn it over to our committee members.
Hi, I'm Lolita Walker. Thanks so much for joining everybody. I am a member of the committee.
Actually should have thrown it to our Vice Chair. Vice Chair Rivera Forbes?
We can't hear her.
We will come back to you Vice Chair Rivera Forbes and we'll move on to our Board Office Staff.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Adlin, Board Administrative Secretary and Assistant to the Policy and Governance Committee.
Good afternoon, Committee Member Staff and everyone who's watching. I'm Revelde Fitzpatrick. He, him, he is. I'm the Director for the Prince George County Board of AIA.
Thank you so much. And apologies. First, we have our Board Members that we need to recognize in our Administration Staff. So Board Chair Mickens Murray.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Judy Mickens Murray, Ex-Officiant Member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
All right, our Administration Staff.
Good evening. I'm Robin Walsh, the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures, and we have a special guest with us this evening. Danarica Johnson, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Good afternoon. My name is Danarica Johnson and I am the Director of, of course, I would get a phone call, so apologies, but I'm the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services.
Great. All right. And then last but not least, our Board Legal Counsel.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dennis Whitley III with the Law Offices of Shipley and Horn, and we are Board Legal Counsel.
All right. And we'll try one more time for our Vice Chair of the Committee, so we can proceed if there's any introductions. Vice Chair Rivera Forbes, we can't hear you, so you might want to dial in, so that when we need you for, you know, obviously participation, you can be heard. We're going to move past the introductions, though, and move on to the adoption of the agenda. So please note that Agenda Item 5.8, Policy 8344.3, Opening of Meeting with Prayer, Precision, was removed from the agenda to allow the Committee the opportunity to discuss the feedback received from the Community Survey regarding the Board Prayer. The question is on adopting the June 11th, 2024 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The June 11th, 2024 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Agenda is adopted as amended. The question is on approving the May 7th, 2024 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The May 7th, 2024 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Minutes are approved. We're now going to move on to Item 2.0, Public Comment and Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. There are two registered live public comment speakers this evening. You have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The Board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentations. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you will be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, Principal, CEO, Deputy Superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly and address individuals or issues to have the meeting move forward. Please adhere to these guidelines as we move through our public comment this evening. So we have two public commenters. We are going to start with Ms. Amanda Wallace, Individual Speaking on Grading Policy, and looking to see if we have Ms. Wallace in the room.
Ms. Wallace is not present this evening, but the second public comment speaker declined to the invitation to move to the panelist's side.
Okay, so the second public comment speaker, Mr. Duba, Individual Speaking on Gender-Neutral Bathrooms, declined to provide public comment this evening?
So usually the link is sent over to them, but he declined. But he did send a written one, a written, well, his written statement, which is also on bottom.
Okay, great. Okay. So then I guess we'll move forward and we will just look forward to Ms. Wallace or Mr. Duba. If you would like to join us at another meeting, we are happy to have you join. So we're going to move on to Item 4.0, Discussion Items.
Okay, I think he's coming over.
Oh, Mr. Duba, great, okay. So, good evening, Mr. Duba. We will turn it over to you for your three-minute presentation.
Good evening. My apologies if there was a mix-up regarding my intent to speak tonight. But, once again, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board Chair Briggs and members of the Board of Education, Policy and Governance Committee Staff and any viewers. My name is David Duba and I'm a teacher at Bowie High School. I sponsor our Student Government Executive Board, as well as our Carrying Colors or Genders and Sexualities Alliance Club. Students and student government and Carrying Colors have worked over the past two years to bring this conversation before you tonight. The Board of Education, or I'm sorry, the Prince George County Regional Association of Student Governments actually passed legislation by a vote of 213 to 53 in April. The text of that legislation is in the actual testimony. I'll read it briefly. Whereas the only accessible gender-neutral bathrooms in many PGCPs schools, such as those in nurses' offices, require students to announce their gender identity or out themselves to adults in order to use said bathrooms. Whereas gender-neutral bathrooms are secluded or barred from public access. Whereas students practically must use bathrooms that don't align with their gender identity. Whereas students face targeted bullying for using bathrooms that do not conform with their sex assigned at birth. Whereas students are unable to go to the bathroom all day due to the aforementioned reasons. Whereas students are unable to invoke their rights according to Administrative Procedure 0103. It is hereby resolved that P-G Grass endorses the labeling of publicly accessible bathrooms as gender-neutral and additionally endorses the conversion to or addition of publicly accessible gender-neutral bathrooms in order to remedy the aforementioned issues. And so the goal of this legislation and of my testimony tonight is to seek a change to the administrative procedure led by the Board of Education, so that gender-neutral bathrooms can be labeled and publicly accessible without an adult barrier, either as multi-use or single-use bathrooms, depending on the needs of each school. Our goal is that this could be done by the Board of Education specifically because in seeking the ability to label a bathroom gender-neutral at school levels, we faced concerns from Central Office that they would not be able to support that decision under current administrative procedure without specific confirmation from the School Board or the Superintendent. A few additional notes. I believe the PGCPs would benefit from an addition to this policy that clearly states that schools can label a public, single-use or multi-use bathroom as gender-neutral without an affirmative policy that clearly states that schools can label public bathrooms as gender-neutral, principals or school staff are in a position where they don't clearly have the support of the Central Office or policy when doing so, and principals or school staff could face punishment, especially if the public were to react negatively to that change or if there were to be an incident without the support of Central Office. In meetings with PGCPs General Counsel, they have confirmed this and indicated that clear direction from the School Board or Superintendent is required. Currently, Board Policy 0103 and Admin Procedure 0103 state that students and staff shall have access to restrooms, locker rooms, or changing facilities that correspond to their gender identity. A student or staff who does not wish to use a shared facility shall be provided with a safe alternative, which may include but not be limited to access to a single-stall or gender-neutral facility. Addition of a private partition or curtain, use of a nearby private restroom or office, or a separate changing schedule. A transgender or gender-diverse student and staff shall not be required to use a separate, non-integrated space when the student has not requested access to such. And under no circumstances shall students and staff be required to use sex segregated facilities that are inconsistent with their gender identity. Specifically, the language in subsection B that states that a student or staff who does not wish to use a shared facility implies that a single-stall or gender-neutral facility in the subsequent subsection would not be a public or shared facility. And so this leads to a situation where students are using gender-neutral bathrooms. They have access to them, but they're only in nurses' offices or admin offices. They're locked, they're behind a key or an adult. And in our aging buildings, often they are broken, or they're being used by a sick student in the case of the nurse. Or either way, students must out themselves to the adult in that space before being permitted access. Additionally, in our large high schools, it can sometimes take students a very long time to walk from one side of the building all the way to the nurse or admin office, if there's only one gender-neutral bathroom, and walk all the way back, once again, leading them to have to ask for a special pass or explain why they were gone so long to their teachers. Again, putting them in a position to out themselves and generally putting them in a position where they're not able to access bathrooms the same way that our gender-conforming students are able to. Some may express concerns that labeling public bathrooms as gender-neutral would lead to unsafe environments. But in response to that concern, I would point out first that our current Board Policy and Procedure essentially allows students to use any bathroom publicly. So already, any student can go into any bathroom. And this would simply be labeling a bathroom as gender-neutral to make it clear that there may be gender-not-conforming students in there and to indicate that it's a safe space for those students. And research shows that gender-neutral bathrooms have actually contributed to lower levels of bullying, abuse, and safety concerns, such as a recent study published in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health. So the goal is just to keep all of our bathrooms safe and secure for all students.
ASMR, there's a folder on the table that has the pool application in it. That's a folder on the table.
Mr. Whitley, you're muted, just so you know. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Duba.
Oh, it's all right. I'm just wrapping up. So in terms of concerns about safety in restrooms beyond just those for our gender-not-conforming students, I would encourage the Board to consider policies such as instituting vape detectors or other procedures to ensure greater safety for all students. But I believe that this minor change in allowing signage would not impact student safety for the general body, but would increase student safety for our gender-not-conforming students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hey, and I believe our other our other testimony has not arrived. Is that correct, Ms. Adlin?
Yes, she's not even ten minutes today.
Okay, great. And one thing I will ask for this evening is if we can have the timer up, just so that we can keep everyone on time. So I'm going to be a kind of a hawk about that. We're going to move on to Item 4.0, which are discussion items. As I mentioned, there are six items for discussion. Each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. So we're going to go to Item 4.1, Policy 3323, Purchasing. I yield to Florida Mrs. Welsh to provide the Committee with an update on Agenda Item 4.1, Policy 3323, Purchasing.
Good evening. So the purchasing policy 3323 is, we have Mr. Danarica Johnson here, who's going to spend a little bit of time going into a little more detail with it, help everyone understand what it involves, as well as answer any questions anyone has. But I did want to add, let you know that I have added language, and not just me, but the Office of Operations for, I should say, the Division of Operations, Wes, who does the actual MBE, Minority Business Enterprise Program. And we have added language into the purchasing policy to include the requirements for MBE, as well as Women Business Enterprise Programs. So you will see as you go through the policy specific language that they felt the, in terms of when we're putting a contract out, what are important things to have included in that contract when we're looking for a minority business enterprise. So as you go through, you'll see this, but I don't want to take away from Ms. Johnson's time, because she's here specifically to respond to any questions from the last session, as well as provide any detail that you need related to the policy. So, Ms. Johnson?
All right. Good afternoon, good evening. And just wanted to just share, I guess, a couple of the updates that we had in the Board Policy 3323. And then what we wanted to amend or to update and change is our small-dollar thresholds and then putting them more in alignment with the CO-MAR and how the CO-MAR has increased those values, so that every time that they're increased by the state, that they automatically are increased by the school district as well, because we follow the CO-MAR. The other point of changes that we had were in some of the definitions about RFPs and IFBs and when contracts would actually be included or to be submitted to the Board, thank you, submitted to the Board for actually approval in the process of being a Board Action Summary. So currently, we send projects that are not awarded to the lowest bidder to the Board for review. And we also, one of the changes that we have is sending RFPs that are not awarded to the highest technically and lowest responsive, responsible bidder to the Board as well. Some of the contracts that even if they do fall in those categories of being the lowest bidder, or if they are the highest technically ranked awardee, we still bring those to the Board, because we feel like some things impact how we do business at PGCPs, and then those projects actually should come to the Board for the awareness portion as well. I know that we have a list of questions that were sent for a response due to the time. I don't think that I have enough time to go through all of them, but I will respond and provide you all with a formal written response for those questions that were submitted. Are there any questions that I didn't go over that you all had about 3325 that were not sent to me via email?
And Ms. Johnson, if you can, if you can just remind us of some of the questions that you are going to report back on really quickly, that would be very helpful, just as a reminder for committee members.
So some of the questions that I received were, what contract does the Board Chair sign off on? What type of authority is given about signing off on contracts? We also put a language in there that you all would see contracts that did not make it to the Board, because it adhered to the thresholds of being awarded to the lowest dollar in the highest technically ranked vendors and proposals, that we would send those to you on a biannual basis. The question was, what is biannual? And so definitely clearing that up, that it would be, the reports would be run on January and in June. They asked questions about what happens when a person is no longer with PGCPs. Is there a separation time? Is it possible for two individuals to sign a contract? And then just providing some type of cheat sheet that would help a better understanding of the policy. And I would love to be able to have a session, a training session with you all to just kind of go over some procurement 101 rules.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. Colleagues, the floor is now open for discussion or comments. Are there any questions for Ms. Johnson? And I would just want to frame, before we get started, one thing is having the timer up. Two is that we do have a very limited amount of time, so we want to get through as much this evening as possible. So if your question isn't urgent for right now, then I would really appreciate if we could hold those questions for later. Chair Mickens Murray? Chair Mickens Murray, you're muted.
I have a question, but Ms. Johnson can respond in writing. When I first came on the Board, the Procurement Director was able to sign any contract, any contract for 250K. Is that still in the manual? If so, why? And shouldn't the technical or the expert over the activity sign contracts? So you can respond later. You don't have to take up time now. But I think that's important for the Board going forward, to have some clarity around that.
Thank you. So, a follow-up, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I understand your question, is that you want the director had the authority of purchasing, had the authority to sign contracts up to 250? And that those are the contracts that you're asking, why the director purchasing would have that?
Well, I'm trying to figure out why the purchasing would sign and not, for instance, as the Board Chair. We led a contract, and when I go back and look at that contract, the only signature on the contract is the procurement officer, nothing from the Board Chair. That made no sense to me. So it's that kind of thing. I believe that experts in the area should have some responsibility and take responsibility by signing those contracts.
Thank you. That clarification was really needed, and I will respond.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Walker?
Hi, and thank you so much. Yeah, in alliance with Chair Mickens Murray, I'm just wondering if you could work with Revel to get that scheduled, maybe on one of our meeting days specifically, so we don't lose track of that. Procurement 101, that'll be important. Also, the checks and balances throughout the system. So as you look back, we definitely should have at least two people. So as you look back through the system, just looking at where checks and balances can go, that'll be amazing. Thank you so much.
May I ask a question? Is there a recommendation from the Committee that we should be looking at having two people sign off, and if so, for the contracts, and if so, then we would put that into the policy?
That's a great question, Mrs. Welsh. And I think what I'm hearing from Chair Mickens Murray and Vice Chair Walker can confirm, but what I'm hearing is what are best practices? And what are the rationale behind the decisions that we make? And from Ms. Johnson being an expert here, bringing back that information on what happens in those instances, and what was the rationale, if any, existed around why we did that before? And then I think likely Mrs. Welsh will have a recommendation, if any, around updates to the policy.
I'll make a change, okay. Yeah, because honestly, if it, can I be acknowledged?
Yes, Vice Chair Walker.
Okay, thank you. Just really quickly. I think also just understanding the checks and balances to Board Member Briggs' point, is that maybe there's only one, because there's alignment inside of the organization somewhere that we don't know about. So just help us with what that looks like and some understanding.
So we will look forward to that. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Are there any other questions for Ms. Johnson this evening? Director Johnson, I hate saying this, Johnson, but just hope you're okay with it. Okay, please be advised that this policy bill will be returned to the next PNG meeting for further discussion. Any objections? Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Committee on Policy 3323 and have it brought back to the next PNG meeting for further discussion. So we're going to move on to Item 4.2, Update on HB 1079, the Attorney General's Response. And here in this section, we're just really quickly going to provide updates on the Attorney General's response in relation to the Chair policy and what the current state law says. We'll have kind of a brief opportunity for questions, but I do want to turn it over to Mrs. Welsh and likely Mr. Whitley, just to provide that legal expertise on the Attorney General's opinion on that state law.
So the Attorney General basically said that for the selection of the Chairperson, that when there's a vacancy, that that position should be voted for, except if, in fact, there is bylaw or something that is in policy that might say something differently. So what we do have is a bylaw that has to do with the co-chair that talks about that, and all it says is, it doesn't really address vacancy, it just says, in the absence of of the Chair, then the co-chair or the vice chair would fulfill the responsibilities of the Chair. So, in essence, and I would think Mr. Whitley should certainly chime in here, but in essence, I think what, based on the whole letter, it sounded like there should be an election for the Chair if there's a vacancy. Mr. Whitley?
Yes, and actually, for full transparency, I spoke with Robin and the Officer General Counsel, and we're in alignment on reading the Attorney General's opinion. So there's no daylight between the Officer General Counsel and our firm as well.
Thank you so much. And I just want to clarify, because I know that there may be some members on the Committee or Board Members that will tune into this, or, you know, the public that may say, oh, you all have been discussing a policy about the Vice Chair potentially assuming the role and responsibilities of the Chair and voting on that. And so we have a bylaw that hasn't been confirmed, it hasn't been approved by the Board. And so those are revisions to the current policy. And unfortunately, we will likely not have that policy completed by June 30th, yet we do need to make a decision about a Chair. And so because of that, the kind of retribution, I guess, here is going to the law that currently exists that speaks to steps that we can take to address this issue. And so I just wanted to give clarification around Mrs. Welsh and Mr. Whitley's reasoning behind it. So are there questions? I'm going to go to Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, it's nearing the time that I unfortunately have to leave this meeting, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, because that's not how I read the Attorney General's rules, but you all are the experts, though. At this point, you tell us what we need to do and the guidance for that. But do I understand that if there's a vacancy in a Chair's role, so we will have a vacancy for six months in the Chair's role? And so I think what you're saying is based on what you read and have interpreted for the law and his feedback, is that we need to have a six-month election and then have another election in December. Is that what I hear you saying? Because that's not what I read, or at least that's not what I believe I read.
And Ms. Walker, are you directing a question at a particular person or just?
Well, I'm asking our legal counsel. Thank you for that. Yes, I'm asking our legal counsel to the iteration of what he felt everybody was in alignment with.
Yes. Yes, that's the way I read the letter. And again, I've conferred with the Officer General Counsel, and that's the way they read the letter as well.
Okay. And so what's our next steps for this, please? To be honest, one, I didn't know that that's what we were talking about tonight. My bad for not understanding that completely, because I would have had the document printed out and right beside of me, so we could just understand the clarity on that. But Board Member Briggs, what's the next steps on this policy?
So, and that's a great question. So this was really more timing and being ahead of the game, because we have to make a decision on June 30th. So essentially, we have another bite at the apple. If you want to have a discussion about this on June 18th, then we can have this on the agenda, but we wanted to provide rationale and guidance around how we would approach a vote for the Chair once that time comes. And so that is it. If you have, you know, other clarifying questions, we can make time during the June 18th meeting for the Chair Policy Discussion.
Yes, it's clear to me that we need to have elections in December, absolutely. We've been doing that for years. It's in a policy, I understand it, where my clarifying needs to, I need clarity on, is really this six-month window? And why, if there is a vacancy, which the Attorney General did, I thought I read, and I will read again, that there's not going to be anybody in a seat, then the Vice Chair assumes the responsibilities. Now, I don't know where I read it wrong, so it would be great to be able to take a look at that, or have you all just explain it just a little bit more to me. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. And I will say, just for your context, and I'm sure Mr. Whitley's going to go here, so I'll turn it to him, but I think it's around the language, around vacancy versus absence. And so I think you can share it.
And Madam Vice Chair, if you want to give me a call offline or give Robin and I a call offline, we'll happily go into that before the next meeting, so you'll have all the information before the next meeting, so that you can have a more in-depth discussion.
Oh, it's okay. I'm happy to do it at the public meeting, I mean, on this forum or at the, wherever the right meeting is. I don't need a sidebar about it. I don't need to fight for the position. Honestly, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing for our Board of Education, consistency, continuity, and making sure we can just get the job done. I have no desire to fight for six months about who gets inside of this position, to be honest with you. We just need to do the work. I didn't read it as that, so if you, I'll have some clarifying questions for you. No worries, but I think it should be done so, in case other people have questions that they all hear the answers to. But I appreciate it. Thank you. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item four point three, and I believe we have until about five forty. So we're gonna move on to the school year twenty four twenty five work plan update. And I will turn it over to, I believe, Ms. Welsh. But before I turn it over to Ms. Welsh, I'll just give the context here that we have policies that we vote on each year. And those policies will be the ones that we'll review, will update in the subsequent school year. And so right now, as board members know and committee members know, we receive some list of policies from the superintendent. We also have the opportunity to receive a list of policy suggestions from the board. And we really think it's important that we hear your voices. And we know when we hear your voices, we're hearing the voices of your constituents and those really unique concerns that you may have in your district. So we have a process in place for our school year work plan, and it is kind of ever-evolving and iterating constantly. But I'll just turn it over to Mrs. Welsh really quickly to provide some context on the work plan for this year.
So the superintendent did provide a memo, which I think you all received, that does talk about recommended policies for next year. The first group of policies, when you see, looking at that was, is actually, most of those were identified basically because of the fact they're so old, they're from like two thousand and five. So it's more of updating that there is a group of policies that are absolutely required by law to be that we need to address for this upcoming school year because of, mainly because of the last twenty four, the twenty twenty four legislative session where bills were passed that said you must have policy as well as Title Nine needs to be reviewed also because of the fact that the regulations, there's new regulations going into effect in August, which will change our policy. So we will have to make revisions to that. And then there is a section that also talks about policies where we have administrative procedures, but no policies. So we have added some policies that there. So saying that, these are sort of functionality in terms of looking at what we have to do by law and what we need to do based on what we currently have. But on top of that, in the past, we've had board members also provide input in terms of what kinds of policies, which policies they like to have us address, or if there are any new policies. Like I can remember last year, like the AI is a brand-new policy that was put on the agenda. So each of you, so we want board members to share whatever it is that they have. But there's only so many meetings in a year and so much time to write policies. So once we get the list of all the policies, then we will have to make a determination of which ones we absolutely think are critical to include for next year's work plan. And from there, then we actually put together a schedule of which policies we'll address. There's also several policies on the list, I should say, that have come as a result of this past year where constituents brought forward, like the Special Ed Advisory Committee, one was one, bullying harassment was another one that we are going to revisit for this next year. So those are all, and also, we also include like AI, which says we're going to review that annually because that's so new and there's major changes happening every year. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. But I think Chair Briggs sent out information, or Cindy sent out for the board members to provide that, the information of any policies they think would be important to include into the list. That's that's it.
Yep. Thanks so much, Mrs. Welsh. And yeah, that list is out there. So if you haven't received it, then we'll send it out again. Mrs. Welsh, I'm not sure if you shared a deadline for when board members should respond, or if that's.
So in the past, ideally, it would be very good to get to get it before the end of June to put everything together so that when we come back for the August meeting, we would have that in front of us so that we could, you know, discuss and hopefully vote on it, and then you'll be able to present it to the full board.
Great. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item four point four because time is not on our side. But if you have additional questions, then feel free to email me directly and CC our committee staff, and we'll get back to you. So we're gonna move on to item four point four, Update on the Prayer Survey. On February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, the Policy and Governance Committee discussed removing the prayer from board meetings to allow for an inclusive and culturally responsive gathering. After the discussion, a survey asked for feedback on this change, which was sent out to the community, and one response was received. It was as follows. Yes, the board should be removed. The board prayer should be removed because we have freedom of religion. So the floor is now open for discussion. Any comments? I think we were largely on the same page about this. So again, if you don't have much to share and just want to share your opinion, then we can try to save some time here.
And may I just reiterate that at the last meeting, we did put, had been silent prayer, and we put in the board's prayer or prayer, whatever, as slash reflection. So we did, in essence, re-add in, back in the prayer to the policy.
Hey, so hearing no comments, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight on new policy, on new bylaw. Which I don't believe we have a number for yet, meetings of the board, and make the necessary updates. I think we're gonna probably have to stop there for now. We did have a grading policy that we were gonna address as well as field trips. But I do know we have some board members that have to hop, and they communicated they had a hard deadline at five forty. So I believe the meeting for this evening is gonna be coming to a conclusion. I'm gonna move on to our follow-up and closing. So follow-ups from the meetings will be addressed at the next planned Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Next steps are, that's the next, I'm sorry, I apologize. This is item seven point O, follow-ups to next steps. So the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four at five PM. This meeting will be virtual, so please continue to check the PG CPS Board webpage for more information. Moving on to item eight point one, Closing Remarks from the Chair and Adjournment. I want to say thank you to everyone for joining in on this cursory meeting and discussion that we had tonight on our board policies. The question now is on adjourning the June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four Policy and Governance Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
To move then seconded. Any objections?
What happens if the vote loses?
Then we're standing here. We're gonna stay here. But it sounds like I don't hear any objections, so we're here. And so the time is now five forty, and the June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.